Good afternoon. The time is now one o'clock, and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of January 13, 2015, is called to order. We're pretty much on time. We got the morning's work done, and we're able to head right to our guests here for public participation at the State Board meeting. So Mertz, if you would work through that with our guests, we'll do so.
I have three public participation forms. It's my understanding that the first two people will come to the table together, and I believe Jeffrey Bowle and Martin Pasetti will come to the table. And then on deck is Mary Starr. And am I correct that Mr. Bowle will be speaking for both of you? So, Mr. Pasetti, are you yielding your five minutes?
I am, thank you.
Okay. Well, I'll adjust this here. The board, I just want to, I want to go over the ground rules a little bit. Sometimes people expect an interaction with board members, and they're here to listen, but not to interact during this portion of the meeting. So, we thank you for coming, and whenever you're ready, we're ready.
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Bowle. I'm the principal at Lakeview High School in Battle Creek. I'm the author of the open letter about state testing plans that I believe was sent in October to all of you board members, to all state legislators, and Superintendent Flanagan. I'd like to address the issues from there further here. I know that this board and Superintendent Flanagan's office are not solely responsible for our current policy challenges, but you are all involved in setting the state's policy agenda, so I appreciate the chance to voice our concerns here, and appreciate your time. First, a brief introduction. I started my professional career as a tooling design engineer, and I did that for eight years prior to moving into education. Since then, I have taught in four different public schools, I've administered in four different public schools, including urban, suburban, rural, and rural schools, as well as a specialty CTE school and a math-science center. I tell you all this, just so that you know, that I've experienced more of public education than most people can claim, and I feel like I understand it more thoroughly because of my experience in the private sector. I have not done anything like writing that open letter in my 18-year career in education. I was driven to do it because I love students, teaching, and teachers, and I am very worried about the state of education in Michigan today. Michigan educators are disheartened by the lack of coherence, lack of vision, and lack of good old plain sense that have characterized education policy in Michigan for the past two to three years. We are tired of watching the escalating frustration of our peers as they go, are being asked by the state to go in this direction, and then that, and then this, chasing policies that cost fantastic amounts of people-time, yet provide little tangible value for our students. We're also tired of watching the impact of this on students. The hundreds of hours that we spend jumping through hoops are hours that we cannot spend doing what our society desperately needs us to do, which is educate our children. As our budgets are reduced to the bone, we do not have the extra time to do that. In the context of this broader frustration and lack of faith in policymakers, high schools are being asked to give a test this year that is hurtful to student learning and that will add little or no value to our understanding of our school's work. To explain my concerns about high school testing, I'll start by framing five criteria or characteristics of good tests, and then compare what we're doing to those. Good tests satisfy five criteria. First, they're valid and reliable. They're tied to valuable learning goals. They're consistent. They're efficient in their use of resources. And they matter to test-takers, to the test-takers. Let's assume that our tests will continue to meet criteria one and two, as I believe they always have. That is, they'll be valid and reliable and tied to valuable learning goals. Let's assume, too, that maybe, after this year, we'll even have consistency, criteria number three. The problems arise for criteria four and five. Neither this year's interim tests nor the tests planned for the future will meet those criteria. So let's look at those separately. Criteria four is about efficient use of resources. The plan now is for a test that will take about 16 hours to administer, if administered in full. This is wasteful of schools' most precious, most precious resource: people-time. It wastes instruction time for students taking the test. It also wastes instruction time for our ninth, 10th, and 12th graders, who we have to dismiss because we can't continue instruction during those tests. Finally, it wastes the time of our staff in organizing all those tests, proctoring them, and then organizing the logistics of numerous makeup tests that we have to have going on during regular instruction time. Why is the proposed test so long? What the state seems to have in mind is a long, rigorous set of tests for each content area that will provide schools with highly granular student data. However, to my understanding, the state does not need that level of granularity to satisfy its compliance needs, and schools don't need that type of data from the state because we can get that type of granularity from more actionable resources, like our in-house course tests, which we can respond to immediately, not two months later or a year later. The state could easily choose to test a sample of high school competencies in six hours or less. That is what Massachusetts currently does, and their students are outperforming almost every other state in the United States for the last 10 years, while Michigan continues to lag. The extra 10 hours that we will require over the length of Massachusetts' six-hour test this year will cost the students in my high school alone 13,500 hours of instruction. Purposely choosing to do that to students is shameful, given that there are better options that are known to us that require less time. Criteria number five says that the test has to matter to those being tested. The state-required junior tests, aside from the ACT, now SAT, portion, do not matter to our students at all. Yet we make very high-stakes decisions based on those tests. Looking at this from a business perspective helps clarify how inane that is. If we, the people in this room, were asked to evaluate a business to determine how successful a business is, one thing we would never consider doing is giving all the employees of that business a 10- to 16-hour test that didn't matter to them at all, and then rating the business based on that. It would make no sense to do that in business. So why is that what we do in education? I raised most of these points in the open letter that you received. I appreciate that Superintendent Flanagan's office wrote a response. I'll say the legislature never did, and I appreciate that. The response from, of the letter, the response from Superintendent Flanagan's office could be summarized, I believe, in two sentences. First of all, MDE must comply with current laws. Second, using technology to give the test will address some of the problems I raised. I believe the second part of that letter regarding technology doesn't deserve any response, other than to say that to suggest that participating in a pilot of MDE software will somehow be helpful disregards MDE's long history of problems with new software releases and is wholly dismissive of the massive logistical work that it takes to do that in a school. The bigger problem, though, is the repeated implication in the letter that MDE is just complying with law. To my knowledge, there is no law requiring 16 hours of tests. Actually, there is a law to the contrary, and even that law does not offer us a minimum number of hours; it offers us a maximum. There are many ways to comply with current law that do not require so much testing, and Massachusetts provides us with a great example that I believe would work for us. So, to address these two problems, I recommend the following things, or to address these problems, the following two things. First, greatly reduce the length of the planned interim test. Since the results will be a statistical blip between last year's test and next year's test, the results have no value that I know of for any purpose except compliance with state and federal law. If this is not a situation that calls for minimal compliance, then I don't know what would be. What we have chosen is maximal compliance instead of numerous, less onerous options. For the future, my recommendation is that Michigan follow Massachusetts' lead and create a six-hour test for juniors that is required for students to pass if they are to get a Michigan diploma. There is no other valid way to figure out what our students really know, and thus how our students, our schools are actually doing at the high school level. Such a test would also provide a great motivator for student success that currently does not exist for many of our students. It would improve these students' futures and put Michigan on the map as a pace setter, rather than a consistent laggard in national education rankings. I sincerely hope that you all will take these recommendations seriously, and if you agree with them, you'll do whatever is within your power to make them happen. As a building principal, I really believe the sole purpose for my position is to provide students, teachers, counselors, and other staff the best support I can, so that they can do the best work that they can. As education policymakers, your number-one priority should be exactly the same, and I'm sad to report that to many of us in the field lately, it feels like what's happening is exactly the opposite. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
If anyone would like to comment, say they are. We don't respond, as you heard, but coincidentally, I'm addressing some of this in my report a little later in the item. You're welcome to stay if you'd like, or if you want to.
About how long, which one would that be?
Probably the next.
Four hours.
No.
Three days.
It's like our second.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Starr. I believe she's our.
Not really four hours, by the way. Probably closer to half hour.
Half an hour, yeah.
Probably, but I can't speak for how others are gonna.
We're ready whenever you are.
Okay. It's nice to see you all again. I'm Mary Starr. I'm the executive director of the Michigan Math and Science Centers Network, and I came with myself and my annual report that I understand is inside of your documents that you received today. And I was hoping that we might be able to take a little walk through it, so I could use my five minutes to show you some of the really great work that the Math and Science Centers Network has been involved in over the last year. So while you're looking at that, for that, I want to point out that by legislation, the Math and Science Centers Network is required to evaluate their programs and to provide the MDE and the State Board with an annual report. Each one of our centers, we have 33 centers, and each one of them does their own separate report, and what you have is a bound copy of the summation of those 33 reports. If you'd like to see any one of the reports, perhaps one near where you live for the center that would service the teachers around you, we'd be more than happy to provide that information for you. So I can see almost everyone has it, so we would just look at a few pages together. That'd be great, using my best teaching materials here. On page five, we provide just a real overview about the, what you would find in this report, everything from the numbers of teachers and the numbers of students to the numbers of programs. This is sort of the introduction, and then the rest of the report will give you much more of the details for each one of these programs. In particular, I'd like to highlight on page seven, Project PRIME. As all good teachers right now, we love our acronyms, so PRIME is for Promoting Reform in Mathematics Education. Project PRIME is a math and science partnership grant. In Michigan, MSPs are required to have, as part of the team, one of the math and science centers. Project PRIME is a network program, though, so while the grant was written at the Wayne County RISA and the Math and Sci, Wayne Math and Science Center that resides there, all the information for that project was disseminated to the other regional centers. So we were able to really use the MSP funds to meet the needs of teachers across the state, rather than just the Southeast Michigan. Indeed, the Project PRIME was seen as, from the, as Department of Education, as an exemplary program, and last year at its, at the MSP conference, they were identified and had some speakers who were able to address the entire, all the MSP awardees at that conference as one of the really exemplary programs. And it's also given us an opportunity to work with Bill Peniel at the University of Colorado and Barry Fishman at the University of Michigan on design-based implementation research. And so we're updating the Project PRIME to really focus for 2014 through 2016 on priority schools in Southeast Michigan. So that's been a really great opportunity for the network to both increase our visibility and increase our evaluation protocols. If you would flip to page 12, you'll see that we have two focus areas. The first one is identified here on creating professional development for preparing students to be college and career-ready. We give some samples, but just to give you the overview, you know, this is the biggest goal. We really want to have teachers who are ready to do math, the best kind of math and science teaching that they can, and it's really all about the students. So what can we do with our students to make sure that they're college and career-ready? And then on page 14, our second focus area is to facilitate the development of the Michigan STEM Partnership. And Kristi Claude Webb is the interim executive director of the Michigan STEM Partnership. She's here with us today also. We feel strongly that we're able to, we have been able to meet the requirements of that focus area also. If you flip all the way back to 22 and 23, you will see a real smattering of what we might call our gold nuggets, different projects that have been really working well throughout the state. And as you look at the bold text, you'll see that there's a number of our 33 centers that are involved in this. It's not just one center. We really are working hard to make sure that the network acts as a network. And then finally, if you flip all the way back to page 33 and toward, to the end of the book, if you, if the rest of the narrative in the report didn't make you grin and you really love numbers, then you're going to love page 33 through the end, because that's where we'll provide you all of the graphs and data that supports the narrative that was in the beginning of the report. So I thank you very much for your time. I hope that you'll take the time to really look at this report, and if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. My email address is in the front, on the back of the front cover, so I'd be more than happy to speak with any of you at any time about the work of the network. Thank you.
Is there anyone else with a public participation form? Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is an introduction of, today we just have a single new employee, but we're happy to introduce her to the team, and I'll turn it over to Vanessa for that.
Good afternoon, everybody, and wanted to take a minute to introduce Tina Block from the Division of Qualitability Services in the Office of Standards and Assessment. I wanted you to cover a little bit about what you do, she.
Oh, well, I basically get to draw pictures all day for this. And it's been really good. I actually was a contractor for almost four years before making full time, so I really enjoy it here, and it's my dream job, so thank you very much.
Welcome. So I think next item is John, report on the state superintendent search. You can move that up if you'd like.
As every, the board members are all aware, and most others, we are in the middle of an open search for superintendents, both on our website and Ray and Associates, who we heard from publicly beginning that last month, is a description and information about how to apply. I think there's a very clear statement about the kind of superintendent that we're looking forward to work together with the board to advance an effective educational vision and agenda, someone who has experience managing educational improvement at scale. We have until February 19, is when the window closes for applicants, and I think we all are eager to encourage a, many hopefully well-qualified, strong candidates to apply, both from Michigan and outside of Michigan. And I know the search firm is reaching out and talking to people, encouraging them to talk to others, and suggest people that might be interested, encourage them to apply. We have no favorites. I want to keep saying that. I think we are all interested in also respecting you can apply in confidence, and you will be treated as such until some point when you're one of the people that we're closing in on, you don't have to feel yourself. And I think you'll be treated equally well, whether you are a quiet, confidential candidate or campaigning actively for the job, that we are not going to, we're going to look hard and thoughtfully, and make sure we're looking hard and thoughtfully at all applicants to this job. So I think we, we want to communicate that this is both a great challenge and a great opportunity, and to help Michigan improve education and follow in Mike's footsteps. So I do hope that we're, and I encourage all my fellow board members, I hope you have talked to Tim Quinn or the search firm, if you have suggestions about who to look for, who, where to look, networks to pursue. And I know the firm is actively doing that, so please share your thoughts on quality candidates and others who are out there as well. Contact Ray and Associates and Tim Quinn, and who's our, is a Michigan-based consultant who's helping in this process, to make suggestions or to discuss the possibility. If you're interested in exploring this, please feel free to talk to Tim. Don't be shy about talking to any of us. We'll all, I think, say the same thing. Encourage you to take a hard look at it, reiterate what we articulated in terms of the criteria and what we're looking for, and hopefully we'll have a good candidate. And this process, then, if we have a number of high-quality people, we will be on track to proceed in March with the steps towards a decision and hit our goal of having someone in place in April. And as I think the search firm folks reiterated last time, good time to be looking. Folks will be looking at their next job, if they're educators potentially, or, and it's not exclusively educators who can apply, and to do this in mid-spring is the right time for decision-making. So I'm happy, and I thank everybody for working hard to get this going, and now that it is going to participate actively in it.
Great. Thank you. Next item is approval of State Board of Ed minutes. First one is the approval of minutes of the special meeting of December 11. Entertained a motion, moved by Lupe.
Support.
supported by Eileen. Any discussion or corrections? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. Approval of minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of December 16. Entertained a motion. By Lupe. Supported by John. Are any corrections or discussion about the minutes? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Great, thank you. John, president's report.
Thank you for the reelection. I've been president now for four or five hours. I have a lot to report. Had the tuna for lunch, and I made it richer. No, I said, upon my reelection, I said a piece, which I just want to reiterate, I'm going to work hard to help us work together and focus attention on important policies, agendas, initiatives that can help us improve education, and that includes the important work of the superintendent, but also includes being, moving our standards forward, being strong advocates for good legislation, whether we're proposing it or the legislature, and having our voice reflect policies and priorities that can help improve achievement, period. I think I am going to reach out, and I hope joined by others of you from both parties, to the legislative leadership, Republican and Democratic, that's new and not so new, and the governor's office, and continue to talk about how we can work constructively and find as much common ground as possible, and what some of our ideas are, as well as appreciating theirs. So I want to do that right away, and it'll be a way to help us keep them up to date on the superintendent search, get their perspective, make sure we're talking about that, as well as important topics like we talked about this morning, how do we keep advancing high-quality standards in sync with maintaining legislative funding, et cetera, that are important, and doing that well. So I want to make sure to do that, and appreciate the opportunity to keep working with all of you, and appreciate all my colleagues on the board.
Okay. For my report, and we are pretty much where we thought we might be. Couple of things. One, I want to reiterate what I said this morning also, that it's been a joy to work with a board that even though you're elected by, after being nominated by parties, work so well together. I think you're genuinely a model for the legislature, not only at state level, but at the national level, and appreciate that very much. I also want to say I've visited Dansville. I do a different visit each month. I've been to 70-some school districts now. Every chance you get, I know we hear we're laggards. We're really not. You look at individual school districts, their improvement in reading is dramatic. The excitement and the engagement you see of kids in their classrooms is wonderful. We have work to do, especially in terms of state policy. I think there's been, particularly with the SAT thing the last week or so, there's been some critiques. Much of it isn't, much of it's legitimate and valued. I think our job is to help educate folks about the multi-tiered, we have multi-tiered systems of support in our schools. We have multi-tiered systems of non-support when it comes to putting policy together, because there's so many different folks in charge. Makes it difficult. I tweeted last night that I hear Congress may drop a bill on No Child Left Behind tomorrow, meaning today. Not sure if that happened or not. We're watching for it. I'm not privy to what they are doing, but they need to reduce the burden of testing, period. This is an example where we're often blamed, after a while, I mean, my daughter's a high school counselor. Should have seen her message to me after the announcement of SAT came out. It was interesting. And then to try to say, as dad, that we actually don't make that decision, that's made by others. At least I have someone who understands and believes that. But in this case, this starts with federal policy that's really gotten oversaturated with testing. I think our legislature probably well-intentioned, but nevertheless has added to this. I'm going to suggest, and partly this was in my notes today anyway, but I think it's particularly kind of fitting with Jeff's remarks, and they're heartfelt remarks. These are, there's a lot of pressure in the field right now. I do understand it. I, it's frustrating when we only have so many levers we can pull ourselves. So what I'm going to challenge ourselves to do, because it came up again during this week of kind of frustration about SAT, that we need to present to you and make it an invite to others that why we think the law has done what it's done to us, especially in terms of hours of testing, and challenge ourselves on that. Let's, let's try to understand better than maybe we have. We believe we don't have any options here, but I think, you know, today's an example with Jeff's heartfelt appeal, but I hear it a lot, and we really could do this differently from their point of view. We think, as an example, and we'll build on this for a report next week, next month, but I think an example would be that unfortunately, the ACT at this point in time doesn't align to the common core, and it requires us to have a college entrance exam, but unfortunately, we have a college entrance exam that doesn't align to the common core. And you have a separate law that requires us to have a test that aligns to the, to the state standards, which I guess we're calling state standards, but obviously was the success in getting through the board and then ultimately the legislature, the common core. But I do think there's room for greater understanding on this both ways, so we'll commit to report the next meeting, and if the Agenda Planning Committee approves of that, I think we could, we could try to understand and challenge ourselves on that a little better. This tweet I did last night has gotten more retweets than I have in a while, and I, but I, it's interesting, I could tell from some of the notifications that you get that there's just so much misunderstanding on who's actually in control on which aspects of these decisions. I was going to do a detailed report, as some of you know, on the SAT issue, but now that there's an appeal on that, I think it's best that we hold off. I don't, I don't know how to do that without maybe jeopardizing what DTMB has to go through. And by the way, that is a Department of Management and Budget decision. We gave multiple names for every category: high school principal, superintendent, all the rest, multiple names for them to choose from to try to put a joint evaluation committee together. I'm not even sure whether they used those names or not. I know they did in two cases, but ultimately, this is their call, and I think they were in a tough spot, given the ratings from the committee, as well as the price issue, but I probably should leave it there. I just said I wasn't going to say much about it, and then I tripped into it a bit. So we'll commit to that, and I think we can help further our own understanding of that, challenge ourselves, and then maybe find a way to communicate whatever that result is to the field. It's certainly worthy of frustration. I found myself ready to respond to a pretty personal email this morning, and then just took a deep breath. Lupe's been a good coach for me recently on just sometimes take a deep breath. challenge ourselves, and then maybe find a way to communicate whatever that result is to the field. It's certainly worthy of frustration. I found myself ready to respond to a pretty personal email this morning and then just took a deep breath. Lupe's been a good coach for me recently on just sometimes take a deep breath, because what I really understood was this was an elementary principal that is beside himself. And, you know, I get it. I get it. These are, this is a particular, it can start with no child left behind being reauthorized in appropriate way. It can start with the legislature listening to you and your advice on the way policy should be, but one of the quirks in our system is that a state board doesn't have more authority than it has and should have and does in some other states, but I appreciate the work you're doing to try to inform them. The folks I work with encouraged me, so I've done for a few months, as you know, kind of quick glimpses of what my job is like, but we did this in a little more quantified way today. So you thought, you're here, you're ready to make the biggest decision you're going to make. People have talked to me about this job, and there've been many. You really have good applicants coming into the pipeline here if they follow up. The MASA job, which was one, I held it one time, it's a superintendent association, that's been filled this week, so those that weren't successful may also continue to apply here, who are seriously are excellent candidates, and then others who weren't interested in that job that I know are here, and then it's got national buzz. So I think you're really going to have some excellent options. But I took their advice and I thought part of what I owe you in this decision you're going to make is an understanding more of what I think you've called the day-to-day, because there is a day-to-day aspect of this that is just part of being the department director. I mean, I, when I'm not in these meetings, maybe to a fault, it's hard to describe, but you operate more like the state treasurer. You have a department with functions and responsibilities that you have to carry out. You have laws that you have to implement, even laws that you've fought. I mean, I've had some that I've gone out, I think, on a limb appropriately on, and but we, you implement them once they're in law, and it is painful at times. But let me just give you kind of a brief way to think about that. So one of the day-to-days, what we're kind of calling, I got some help from the folks on this, is, let me just start with this. One I'd call thirty-nine percent, this is how detailed we got, and I'll take this bit with a grain of salt. This was, this was based on looking at calendars and some other things, but it looks like thirty-nine percent is very much focused on MDE itself. And what I mean by that is administrative, hiring decisions, organizational questions, budget and finance for the department, last-step decisions. I'm the person charged with the responsibility that comes through the process of, this isn't even counting all the work that goes through at the different levels in the organization, but I'm kind of the last one to sign off on decisions. And there's multiple decisions that are just part of running a department. They're not really glamorous or sexy like policy and all that, they're just functioning decisions. Office work, I mean, I try to be respectful, we responded as, appreciate Jeff mentioning, but these are hard to keep up with as they are with you. Just trying to keep up with emails and phone and being somewhat respectful. Alessandra and Karen are very helpful on that for me personally, I just couldn't do it. You know, I mean, it's, I'm trying to stop at the point where I don't get to the point where it sounds like whining, but it's a very, very difficult part of the job, is just trying to stay on top of it and not have people feel like they're not respected. And the meetings, if you're in an organization, you know, comes with any organization or lots of meetings, and most of the time they're, they just have to take place and they're important. Thirty-six percent of the time is spent on what we call outreach and working. I look at this as my way to support public education in this state and to demonstrate it very visibly. So when I go to Dansville this week, almost always, they're smart, all these districts now, because, you know, in our little world, you're a political or you're a symbolic figure. So the second you come to a district, they're going to get, in this case NBC and Lansing follow them, they're going to get their local papers. And what I really feel good about is, without exception, they get good press when this is done, partly because I don't, even if I saw something that I thought was, could improve, and I'm often asked by the superintendent or given principal what that might be, then I offer it. Otherwise, it's day to be positive. It's a day to be appreciative of the work they're doing. And it's the best advice you ever gave me, because I think it was year two when Kathy and Liz and some others, John, said, you need to, you need to do more of this, and I just hadn't really thought about it. And it's very valuable to me to come back then with a lot of, even with what we're calling day-to-day decisions, that you make based on more current experience again. I do want to say, by the way, because I saw a lot of this in the email recently, a little bit of that today in the comments, but we have people who've been in classrooms, who are young, who've been close to that more recently than I have been. Admittedly, I haven't been a local superintendent for twenty years, but we have filled the department with hires of people who've been in these situations so that they understand them and try to operate within this pretty complex structure of laws and all the rest of that. So I think of the visits that way. I mean, Dansville wrote me, their board president, they just feel like they're acknowledged for the improvements they got, and it's because they had, you know, coming with the territory of a visit, they get a lot of this good press that went with them, and they're just, it's very motivational, and I also think it can and is, it does happen when you also make those same attempts, so it's appreciated. I speak to every major group every year. Usually involves driving time of significance. The only time I've ever taken a state plane, and I never will again, was on a very windy, snowy day to elementary principals, because we had to cancel because of weather last year. They have it in Traverse City in the winter. It's like, and we arranged for this, and I go to walk out, and I'm looking for the plane, and I see this kind of Volkswagen with wings, and realize that's the plane. And then worse yet, there's one pilot, and he's older than me, and I'm thinking, is there like a co-pilot here? There's no co-pilot. But what I'm getting at is that, again, you'll find in the person you hire here, there's a symbolism to that person being available face-to-face, frankly, for criticisms. I've developed a thicker skin, people are usually polite, and, well, you know, a third of the time you get positive responses, but it just goes with the territory. So I'm usually, when I can be, I'm there for the extended day. That time I had to, something back here that night, so we flew in and flew out, and I would never do that again. But it's, it's important because they, most of the time I just listen, especially the last three or four years. For a while, I was probably more feeling like I had to defend something or what the department did, and I've gotten better. Cassandra coached me on this once a while back, I don't know if she remembers this, but I, so a lot of times they just want to be heard. And then it gives us some information to come back and say, you know what, there's something to be said about this. So that, and that's to support public education and show people that we're not just a bunch of bureaucrats here to make their lives miserable. Although I can remember feeling that myself, so I don't even judge that. I remember thinking, what the heck have they sent down now? You know, it's just, it feels that way when you're on the other end. Meetings with outside groups, I meet religiously with the Ed Alliance, yesterday wasn't pretty. You know, the part that, I guess I'll just say it, the part that Vanessa attended with me, which is unusual. Normally, always I go alone, but we thought there's some technical expertise related to, especially this other, and she did an excellent job. And then I go into kind of a closed session with them, and these are friends of mine. I mean, I was president of the Ed Alliance at one time, so we're pretty candid with each other. But they're, you know, it's, it's important for that job, and I think it often results in constructive stuff that we either change or they understand differently. And it involves the union presidents, the people who are heads of other associations, about fifteen groups. Conferences, I try to make some, not many. I've canceled, I think Karen would say, three of the last four. I haven't made CCSSO in a while, just the Nate. Part of this is, once you have an end date, everything we're finding on a calendar is really getting even more crunched than normal, because I, what we used to put in July or August, I don't have a choice now, so. Superscript, a team thought it's important that, I mean, we pretty much religiously, usually on Fridays, we're flying to my godson's wedding this weekend, so not Friday, I think it's Thursday this week, if I'm not mistaken. We meet all day. And it's on, it's a very organized, thanks to Alessandra in particular, day. It can have twelve items on it. A lot of them, again, not sexy items, but have to be decided and require a state superintendent's signature. Speaking of that, by the way, I'm happy to not be involved in the emergency manager process anymore. I'm glad that law got changed, and Kathy wrote me last night, and I was able to clarify, no, I don't give any names anymore, that's an old law, and I'm not in the know, I don't know what's going on, and happy to not know. But that Superscript meeting, I can't tell you how important that is, where you're getting the expertise that we pay for as a department in that room, and it changes which, depending on which item it is. That's about sixteen percent of the time. I would say, you know, certainly the state board meetings, I, that should be self-evident, but in one way, I don't, I don't know if it was clear to the board that, this is obviously one day a month that we spend with you, but we pretty much spend the day before getting ready, almost the whole day. This leadership team, the most of it's spent on, are we ready? What's the presentation going to be like? Are we making it crisp? What are the timelines we need? These are important people, we don't want to hold them over if there's a snowstorm coming in. I mean, it's really more direct than you may think. And then in the afternoon, I pretty much try to get my notes together and get ready. Merz is fabulous on this, and Karen in helping me resolve that. But it's a, it's a big part of the job, the agenda planning. The part about reviewing and approving board items, the stuff that even looks perfunctory to you, we spend time on. You know, I want you to have confidence that they're not just coming to you in a consent agenda or something without a lot of thought. There's a lot of thought that goes into it, that they kind of, they just don't reach the level of visibility that Merz or Gongwa or someone's covering, mid-month reports. So we spend a good amount of time on your work related to your important work. And then just, I would just say, kind of the ebb and flow that I might call it is, in the forefront regularly are legislative issues. Honestly, I don't know that we've been clear enough, and that would be more on me than anywhere, that we absolutely take good care with what the board decides is a legislative action, first through the committee and then ultimately with the board. And that, that's what we carry out across the street. Occasionally, it seems different because there's a soup responsibility, but as I said, that was, I'm glad to be out of the one related to emergency managers, and that didn't call for a board, so it was awkward at times, where I'm involved in something that's pretty significant, to say the least, but many of those are gone. But the legislative issues, by and large, I think we've gotten better at the committee meetings with Marty and Wendy and Ben and Caroline, where we want to be responsive to where you want to go, and then that's what we carry on, is the direction with the majority of the board. We don't make up our own stuff. I mean, we, we're in a line, and if you see us not being, we'd want to be challenged on that. Administrative HR employee topics, we're a big department now. We were a very big department, then we were down to nothing when I first came here, and I'll get to that in my final moment, which is just a few minutes away. Administration and budget, I mean, it's a big deal. Just some topics in general, school reform, I can't tell you how much time we spend on that, because if and when we have to do certain things, you want to do this in a fair way. Right now, there's not much of a way to make a decision in a fair way, because the accountability systems are changing so quickly that how do you make a decision based on improvement in a place if you've got all these different vehicles? Including a different vehicle from last year to this year to next year. So we're not going to do anything that doesn't seem fair, but it takes a lot of time on our part to think that through. Teacher prep and certification, a lot more time than I bet you have any idea we spend on that. We have a pretty important role there, and we exercise the, you're involved, obviously, when you approve the EPI ratings and the rest, but there's a lot of groundwork, even at my level, related to that. And I was, I very much appreciate it. Lake Superior State, Ed Week last week acknowledged that if we hadn't taken away their opportunity to do teacher prep in a couple of areas, and they've since been reinstated, by the way, they just said it was their wake-up call, they needed something to be, to shake them up and make them realize that they weren't preparing teachers the way they should, and now they're one of our better. So, I mean, I thought it was a nice acknowledgement by them to go out of their way in Ed Week to say so. Deficit districts, Kyle and friends here, I can't tell you not only how much work is involved in that, that a state superintendent is directly involved in, but how painful it is. This is not the way to run an airline. We need to finance this better. We can now, this isn't like five years ago where we're in a depression, and we need to do it minimally on, as you've said, and you very much appreciate the report that John has led and the rest of you have followed, I think there's a lot of good meat in that. But I particularly think we can give fair, per pupil increases and dramatic increases in at-risk money at the same time. We need to do that. That'll get us out of a lot of this that we're doing almost every week with some deficit districts, because there's about fifty of them. And then when you got to do hearings and the rest of it, enormous part of the job that I think certainly culminates with me, but throughout the whole, the whole system. Flint, our call, we decided together, I mean, there's a little blowback on this, but I thought we're going to give them a longer period of time, even though one could make an argument that that will be tough to pull off, but the alternative is you start the process that starts leading towards possibly emergency managers and others. So I thought Kyle and his team, and ultimately my call, was to decide that in good faith, what they were trying to do is trying to right the ship, and I've said this to you before, the catch-22 in this department is, on the one hand, you have to, under law, hold them responsible for getting a balanced budget, and then on the other hand, hold them accountable if they're not getting student achievement growth. And they're contradictory, but it's something we have to deal with, and I'm going to be happy to not deal with soon. Testing and assessment, don't even know where to begin. I mean, I don't think you could imagine the time a state superintendent, not to mention everyone else, obviously, spends on that. Curriculum and standards, you've lived through that war with us on Common Core. Charters, I mean, we've made some calls, we're working on that, we still think there's room for improvement. I appreciate a lot of what the charter authorizers are doing and have done to improve recently. Federal flex waiver, I said to, just coincidentally today to Cassandra, that we plan to bring that back to the board, but one thing I'm ready to say in our debrief later, I might as well just say it now, which is, you know, I think your points well-taken, that what are the consequences if we don't? Where's No Child Left Behind right now, based on what might be a bill that's dropped and all that? And then finally, I would just, I would just say, this was, this was a harder job ten years ago, in one sense, that the money was so tough. It was easier for me personally, because I had a, I was friends with Governor Granholm, and that was smoother to try to work through two autonomous, appropriately autonomous And I'm happy whenever asked to work directly with Governor Snyder. That's, that's not as frequently, and some of that is, you know, decisions about not being an ed advisor, which I understand, so. But where I want to go with that is, for the newer members especially, since that time, and I think partly because of the relationship I had with Governor Granholm at the time, we got CTE back. It was important for Career Tech to come back to the department. It had been taken away under Governor Angler. Treasury-owned testing and assessment, it's back. We gained the Library of Michigan back. I want to thank Governor Snyder for this, because I think he was ready, I'm not sure I would have done it different if I were governor, is ready, I think Great Start was going to go to DHS. I think I and we had an impact on saying Great Start should be here. It makes a difference for that to be in this department. It certainly makes a difference for testing and accountability, although on our bad days, like the last week, we're thinking, why do we care if they put it in Treasury? You know, what's the problem with this? Why are we? The School Reform and Redesign Office, originally that wasn't going to be here. So, I mean, I, what I'm getting at is, on one hand, we've increased this footprint, to say the least. It's taken a tremendous burden on the people in the department here. But it's better for the districts, I keep telling our guys, it just goes with the territory. It will never be appreciated enough, any more than, you know, when you're a central office person in the district, the buildings are concerned, or you know what you're doing, and the ISD people, they're all stupid, and of course, when you get to MDE. But I really appreciate their work, I can't, I just can't overemphasize how, how much they care about the kids in this state, how devoted we are to your authority and your thinking, and then also how we just try to work through the issues we get every day. This has been a, you know, I'm going to be here a few more months, but I summarize this really as saying, even with some of the challenges, it's an honor, I really appreciate being appointed by you, and I have more to say over the next couple of months, but I thought particularly we should this month, and probably won't have to add anything next month, as you're thinking about the kind of person you want to pick, just that is an issue that just doesn't get the same kind of play that we think of as a large, large part of the job, if you hear those percentages. Hope that gives a bit of a flavor of that. We're good? Okay. Thank you. And here's the And here's the SAT that I said I'm not going to do, so we're going to rip that up right So, now we go to the highlight, Melody. I forgot to show something, but it's too late.
Thank you. This is actually a short report, because we get two weeks off in December, and it was great. Actually felt like time. One group that we have at my school is called the Keith Carrington Community Club, and I chair that club along with a colleague and a good friend of mine, Shannon McGeese, who's here in this picture. But the idea behind the club is to provide community service opportunities for third, fourth, and fifth graders, and we've had this club up and running for the last 10 years. So this year, we have almost 100 students that have signed up, and in this particular event, we visited a nursing home, and we sing holiday songs and read holiday poems to the residents. A few other things that we do, we, our district has a Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration on Monday, the 19th, and our students will go and help to set up and host and greet guests. We've also done things with food pantries, things with Humane Society, and many different organizations over the years. So that's something that we're really proud of at Keith Elementary. So I've talked a little bit about TEACH, and that is another organization that stands for Teachers Educating and Creating Hope, and we are a group of educators that are working to help the displaced families in Iraq, specifically children, and right now we have a campaign going to collect, which has been very successful. And then also, there are a few other groups that are involved in trying to help with different areas there. So there's another group called Mercy, which is a group of doctors that are looking at their medical needs, and then a few others. So all of the groups have come together to create the social media campaign, you know, with the hashtag #WeAreN, but it's a very easy way for people to donate, where they can just text relief to a number, and then that $10 would be donated through their phone carriers. So I have cards available with that information, if anyone is interested, but that was something we're really excited about, because we've seen other campaigns that have been so successful and have gone viral, and that's something that we hope to bring awareness to this. And speaking of that effort, it was highlighted on the front page of the Detroit Free Press last month, and this all came about because of a state board meeting. So Lori Higgins, the reporter from the Detroit Free Press, happened to be here and heard me speak about the TEACH organization, and she reached out and put together a story, which, you know, ended up on the front page, and we got a great response from it. We had people who were reaching out to donate, people who were reaching out to help, so just yet another connection or way to, you know, spread awareness about this through this role. And just as a little side note, this picture down here continues the article, and that's my daughter in the picture.
There's a great picture of you on the front page.
Thank you, thank you. But we were thrilled with that, and it really was a powerful way to spread our message. I've been doing blog entries at least once a month, and my latest blog is called What's Your Problem with Common Core, and it comes from the resistance that I've seen mostly on social media. So I started to notice on a regular basis on Facebook, you know, friends, parents, that would be posting, you know, negative comments, frustrations. I know one friend posted a stupid quote-unquote "problem" from their child's homework. So it just had me curious to see, you know, where these frustrations come from. So that was something I reached out and I asked for feedback, and I got some great feedback from parents and teachers about, you know, what their feelings are. So I put it into a blog, and really, what I found was that the frustration is not with the standards themselves, because I don't think anyone can argue, you know, giving the kids the chance to think deeply and to try to persevere in their learning. The frustration really comes with the resources, or the lack of resources and materials that we have to teach the standards well, and also the frustration comes with the assessment, you know, and those questions that people are posting that are going viral, you know, that are supposed to be linked to Common Core. So it was a great experience to write, and I could really empathize with the way that the parents felt, because I'm a parent as well, and I know how I feel as a teacher and how my colleagues feel. This blog has gone viral. I was told that it reached, as of last week, about 15,000 people on Facebook alone, and it is now traveling and making its way through Twitter. And I've only had one really mean, angry detail. My first one, so I guess that's to be expected, and I guess it just shows that I have started or continued an important discussion about the standards themselves, so. Last week, I got to work with a team from the MDE on the State of Michigan Technology Planning Committee, and the idea is to align the technology plans with the school improvement plans. So it was great to take part in that, and that is a continuing process through this year. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Another good month. Great job on the, Lori Higgins, I think religiously, watches on the internet, even when she's not here. She's, in fact, she's rarely here, and I don't blame her, it's a tough drum, but she, we really appreciate that attention from everyone who does it, but I think it's, you can see impacts that she's made, interesting to hear your story related to that. Marty, and Cassandra, but starting with Marty.
Right. Good afternoon. As you know, the new legislative session begins this week. Tomorrow, they report for their first day of session. As far as committees, the committees are the same, obviously, the standing committee's on education, only the Senate committee has named a chair, and that's going to continue to be Senator Pavlo. The K-12 Approves Committee chairman is going to be Senator Hanson, and the House has not named committee chairs yet. So we will wait to see who the chairs are and the members from both parties as well, from both the House and the Senate. There are, obviously, no bills introduced yet, I'm sure there'll be some dropping tomorrow. There are some bills of some particular importance, waiting on the governor's desk for his signature. A couple to mention for sure are Senate Bill 74, which would include cyberbullying into the anti-bullying law for Michigan, and another one was Senate Bill, hold on, I've got it. Senate Bill, huh? It's the, it's the one to have the adequacy study. I think it's 423, Senate Bill 423, calls for the Department of Management and Budget to secure a vendor to create an adequacy study for school funding. That's over in DTMB, they have to find a vendor, and there are some particulars that they put in that. There is no funding for this, as of now. That's not saying that in the next budget, there may be funding put in for this, for DTMB to hire this vendor, but that's-
ACT may need some work.
Qualified vendor. So, yeah, that bill is waiting for the governor's signature as well. The governor also signed the package of bills yesterday that would create the May ballot proposal, that would, you know, change gas funding and also include a 1% sales and use tax for the purpose of school funding and also funding for local governments. So that's really the legislative action that's going on in the last couple of weeks. And I know that we had a legislative committee meeting last week, where a statement was discussed, that I'll hand it over to Cassandra to take from here.
Thank you. Yeah, so we did have a legislative committee meeting last week, and since there's not been a lot of legislative activity, given the time of year, we basically just kind of looked at a list of things that might be holdover from last time or potentially could come forward in the next two years, and we'll continue to review that list as we move forward. Under John's direction, we did discuss, since this is a new legislature coming in, sending a note to all of the members of the legislature, as well as the governor, both congratulating them on their recent election, and then also including a link to the finance document that the board finalized in December. So I believe we have copies of that.
Do you mind if I, I've been thinking about this, and my hope is, and still is, that we as a board do flag with the government legislature things, and I hope we get attention and hopefully action in the direction of change this year. Several of those I do hope will be some of the things that the legislative committee and we will quickly try to weigh in on, the road funding package, which we talked a little bit about, the teacher evaluation effort, which has such strong bipartisan, bi-sector support, and other things that are important for us to encourage attention to this year. We had this discussion approval of, sort of, a set of issues and a set of directionals about how we improve the school finance and the way we sort of let schools open and close in Michigan. And Mike, your comments during your report about the pain of the deficit reduction districts and the need to do something different, and the opportunity to do something different in the spirit of, how do we invest? How do we invest to help at-risk kids? But more importantly, I think our recommendations that we made speak to how do we improve learning outcomes, learning from best-performing states that spend money more strategically on teachers, career childhood, which we're making some headway on, which spend money in different ways than we do, which is pretty clearly evident that most states do spend more on at-risk, or do spend more for higher-cost, more effective and getting outcome programs. The story in Bridge today about career technical education, if we spend money differently, we'd be paying more for programs that get really good, robust outcomes in terms of preparation for careers, and they cost more and they deliver more goods. So those are the kinds of recommendations that I know we made, and that we have to do something. Our ideas about choice charter, transparency, equality for all schools, may or may not be the right answer, but we need to attend to those issues. We need some better strategy for how we have a landscape of opening, closing new schools and treating all our schools the same. And we also, as we noted, there's some undone issues that have been here since Prop Olay, infrastructure, technology. The regional millage did not work as a way for locals to raise more money without busting the equity again. There are ways that we could do that. So we approved a resolution, we did not get unanimous approval. I respect and appreciate that we want to keep attention to how we can work together, but also how we can signal that the recommendations are not in and of themselves the right answer, they're encouraging discussion and providing some solutions as best we can, possible solutions that help us encourage the direction of change. I guess I was thinking, we have a few options. This was intended to be sort of one note, let's reiterate and call attention, and be interested in talking to the leadership about these ideas, and more of a cover letter than a resolution. When we tried to get some language that we called critical reon in the legislative committee, we didn't get there yet in terms of that. So we could approve this resolution of transmission, or upon reflection, I was thinking, why don't I write a cover memo on this approved action, in the spirit of, this is, these are some issues, and these are the directions of some change that we are encouraging, there's not the be-all, end-all, one answer, and we're eager to encourage attention to these issues and enter into discussions publicly and privately about how we can further some solution. That would be one way to avoid any more divisive votes, if you can, or to, we could take another divisive vote, or we could just, we've already approved this recommendation, it's not perfect, we could try to wordsmith something we can all agree on.
We could do it better.
Yeah, I'm open to any of that. I just think the direction of the changes and the nature of the issues are correct in terms of, these things are affecting student outcomes, and we do need to encourage attention and help encourage action, if we're doing our job in providing some policy leadership.
I would certainly be comfortable having the board direct you to simply come up with a cover letter and, under your signature, and, you know, share with them what the board has already supported.
Kathleen?
In previous years, when the new session started, we have invited the legislative, legislatures, education committees, and appropriation subcommittees to either come to a meeting or come to a reception here, or we have some joint something, and I think we have an obligation to do that. I know we, the staff orients the new members as they go along, but I think it would be good to have something, a joint meeting or a joint reception that we could, we as the board can meet with the legislative committees.
We'd be happy to organize that. Would you say-
We'd be glad to help organize it, but I think we should do that again.
I think I meant what I said earlier, I think it's time for, well, not just because we're new again, but it is time for perhaps a committee, I'd like to be part of it, and Cassandra and Eileen, and she is willing to meet with the legislative leadership, Republican-Democratic, they're together separately, and talk about our relationship, how we can make the most constructive as possible, try to talk more about things like the standards process, and make sure we're on track to do that well, et cetera.
Yeah, we have a lot to, they have a lot of catching up to do, the new members.
Yeah, and we need to get past-
Might think they know everything, but there's a lot to do.
Suspicion versus, we can work together as constructive as we can, without us, I mean, advocating our responsibility to represent a point of view about education policy improvement. I mean, I totally respect the, this legislature was elected, the governor was re-elected, and I have a lot of history and relationship with the governor and his team, which I think can be very constructive. But also, we were elected, Cam was elected.
Cam was, Sam was re-elected, so we, you know, we have a-
With Democratic authorities in part, because they represent, at least to the voter, a value set about supporting public education that encourages people to elect for Democrats. Again, my commitment to work across party lines is, as everybody knows, real and historical and sincere, so let's figure out how we can work together and share our points of view constructively.
All right, Lynn?
I'm all for constructive behavior. As you know, because of the letter I wrote all of you, my concern has been that our actions and the way that we're perceived by others is undermining the work of the department. So one of the things that is really true about this letter is that it's a very good letter, but it doesn't reflect the actions of the last few years, nor the document that it's being, that it's covering, or the debates over accountability for only PSAs and not all schools. So we just have to figure out a way, if you really want to try and change this letter, oh, I'm really sorry, if we're just, if we're going to try and do this, we have to figure out how to write a letter that would reflect that without undermining the board's position, but it also has to reflect that we don't agree on what's being forwarded. I, without dwelling on it, it was important to me that the department be able to address accountability for all students, especially to try and justify more money. So it's just a matter of fact that that's the way that they see it, and the board doesn't have a document like that, so we have to acknowledge the difference. If the board's will is to put a simple statement, and John, I crafted one at one point, and be able to include that, then that would make sense for us to delay taking a vote on it. The same thing is true of accountability, to say that the focus of the board, the board is split on this issue in terms of the previous policies that have been developed on charter, on PSAs. We do believe that accountability for all schools across the board is very important. If a statement like that can be made, then again, wordsmapping would work. But I don't want to have any illusions on this, there are some basic differences. I feel very strongly that when we act in anything that can be seen as a partisan fashion, it undermines the credibility of the department, and we are in a funny spot right now as we try and hire a new superintendent. I hear you saying that that's not the intention of the board, so we can start with a fresh slate, but that's their vision of what we've done. So we just need to figure out wordsmapping that you folks can live with, that we could live with, and if that's appropriate, I'm happy to try and do it. And if not, I understand.
Well, as you know, I'm eager and always to benefit from your wordsmapping and embrace some of that language that you have proposed as a cover memo. some of that language that you have proposed as a cover memo. In fact, I think we sent it back to you and it was your language.
I don't have it here.
But I'm also happy to reflect the differences. I do think our position as a board is, on the charter choice issue, we are saying formally, let's treat them all the same. That has implications in how that happens. But we can acknowledge differences and that this was, this set of recommendations was not unanimously approved. It was approved six-two. It does include, however, we could express the sentiment that we're, this is a starting point, not the final point. We're trying to work together to point directions. We have debates about particulars, but there's within here a set of issues and a set of directions for solution that we think are important to talk about. And I think I certainly can write a letter that is consonant with that spirit as a cover for the action.
You and I could probably put it together in about seven minutes. I picked that number.
I think if people are comfortable with us doing that.
Well, I would like to have a voice in it as well.
Well, all right, maybe ten, because Kathleen wants to do it too. Do you want to try and do it right now, Kathleen? We can.
No, we don't have to do it right now.
Okay, let's, if everybody's comfortable, let's say we're going to put a nice, appropriately worded cover memo together to share our report that was approved, not unanimously, but also to call attention to some of the issues in it and to encourage discussion about how we can work on areas of common ground.
I would think it'd be very valuable, and it seems to me that we did this two years ago. We met with one or two of the chairman and committee members. I think it would be helpful to just share our perceptions of the big picture. What needs to be done? What are, what are the committee members, minority as well as majority, visions of what need, what are the problems that need to be addressed? And just see what kind of common ground emerges from that. Just comment myself. I haven't, some of the governor's proposals over the last four years, I've supported the vast majority of them, but there are a few that I kind of think are, I have had some reservations on, in the same way with some of the legislative actions. So I think we would all benefit from sharing some perceptions and maybe some feedback and as a basis on which to move forward.
I mean, that's what I was proposing. Let's have some smaller group or subcommittee or member meetings with legislative leadership to have those kinds of discussions.
Very good.
And would always want to make them bipartisan.
So should we make a motion then to direct?
I don't take direction very easily.
Independent.
That would be welcome. I don't think we need one, but if that's the rest of the board, you're welcome.
So I hereby move that the Board of Education supports John Austin and whoever else he agrees to involve in the process, coming up with a cover letter and sending said letter and the item D, School Organization Context for whatever that stands for, our document, our finance document, to the legislature and the governor.
Move by Cassandra. For purposes of discussion, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second, and then I have.
And then discussion asked.
Instead of John feeling comfortable or directing or choosing, why don't we say anybody that would like to participate in the construction of the memo, they will understand. I don't like the idea of John being the dictator of who is going to be in charge of this school. So whomever feels comfortable participating, I'd rather have that language versus whomever John seems fit.
Comfortable is friendly.
And I'd like to speak after that, but let's.
John and all the board members.
Kath?
Volunteer board members.
Yes, sir.
Cassandra, I didn't hear included in that the invitation to dialogue with legislators. Is that presumed?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking those were two separate things. The first just simply being the letter, but that doesn't preclude that dialogue from happening.
Okay, okay.
If I may add to that one, this is at a distance, and I tread carefully here, but I think, you know, the reality is the Senate, the House, and the governor are all Republican bodies, and if both Republicans were involved with a team, to John's point, I think would be helpful as you meet with leaders. Not my business in that sense, but I just think they, they're way over-reading our experience. I shouldn't even say that. We've run into some of the things we've tried to move the ball on, that they tend to over-read what's being done, and I think it's helpful when you either break bread or meet together or go to an office or, I mean, I go to theirs typically. I mean, once in a while, we've had a little friction, but it, so I would just say, I think it's very helpful if you can do that, especially with the leaders, and then if it was a, for the sake of discussion, a team of four that included two and two, it helps them as they're trying to work through legislation and see, it's in the spirit of what John's saying. John, did you have something?
Well, after, let's get this done.
Okay.
Just a question. So the cover letter and the document will come back around to the board, or are you going to just send that?
Send it when we get it done. That's what the motion.
Words.
Okay. So call for the vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye? Great.
For Lupe's point, during President's Report, maybe next month, I could have done it this month. We should talk about committees and participation in all, any work groups and things like that. We do have a few committees, but I wanted to point out for Lupe's comment, as Kathleen knows, Eileen, when I came on the board, we, there were bylaw changes that we made, and since then, and at that time, I remember, I know I was arguing vigorously, let's not have an executive committee of this board. Let's have an informal agenda-setting committee, which we can review this and see if we want to keep doing it informal, which is president, vice president, secretary, try to make that bipartisan, but have all people, board members, welcome to participate in all agenda-planning meetings, have committees that are open to all, not exclusive. That's been one of my particular hobby horses, so that everyone on the board is always invited in to participate, even if they're not on the formal decision-making or committee or whatever. And so I just wanted to flag that. I know you weren't being pejorative, but dictatorship is not my strong suit. Inclusiveness is, and anybody and everybody participating in all of our decision-making is what I think we should be about, and that's a message to the people of Michigan, that is what we are.
You know, because I'm feeling very uncomfortable continuing forward with this bipartisan. Our students don't know, don't know about Republicans or Democrats. They know that they're in school and they must study, behave to succeed, and so when we and this board sit here and we continue talking about Republicans and Democrats, I think we should be talking about one body making decisions to move our schools and our students forward. So I'm having a lot of problems today with how things are going and the discussions we're having, because our students have no idea about these different parties and stuff. So I just want to tell you that.
Thank you. Any other concluding comments on legislative report or look good on that?
Did that motion include that we will have meetings with the key people of the legislature?
No, the motion did not include that, but we can do that. Yeah.
I'd please, let's work to set those up.
Can we do that at the next meeting, maybe?
Well, I think before, we'll just start planning.
No, no, to have them here.
Oh, I don't know if we can do that, but I think that one type of.
One way of doing it, maybe we ought to do more than one way.
Yeah, that would be one thing to do. I'm thinking there are some meetings with some of the legislative leadership that some subset of the board needs to begin having to talk about issues, relationship, priorities, et cetera.
I would like to be involved with that.
Yeah, but if we have them here like we did two years ago, then the people that are not participating in the small groups, we all can participate in a discussion with them together.
Right.
It's more about together than isolated little pockets. Together, we should do as many things as possible.
So can we then direct the agenda-planning committee to add that to our upcoming discussion and then determine?
Yes.
What format you would like, and we can bring some thinking to that.
Can I ask a question of Marty? I know it.
You can ask.
I can ask, I don't know. I was in Detroit, the emergency manager, is it official that you ever, have you heard anything on that?
The governor had a press conference, I think at 1:15 or 1:30 today.
Okay, okay.
And to announce something.
I should Google it.
And if you believe the news reports from last night that he will appoint another emergency manager.
So do you know what he said?
Pardon me?
Do you know what he said?
No, I've been in this meeting, so I don't know.
Maybe I should ask.
Good thinking, Marty. I don't care if you're reading the iPad, just remember you're in this.
I just want you to spare the full eighteen months and, yeah, some details on that.
I don't see anything on the Free Press yet.
Is it here?
I also had, is this still the legislative section?
Please.
Okay. I'm also wondering, and I guess it's sort of related to this and sort of related to special education and the rulemaking. I know that there's some discussion, you know, with the JCAR hearing and then having to go back, and it's going to have to be redone. And I know, Mike, you've responded to this too, but I'm just wondering if we could, what the status of that administrative rulemaking might be, and if there's going to be anything done legislatively to make sure that we're pleasing the powers that be to make sure it's all done so, you know, smoothly and where we have more agreement. Is there any work on that or?
Who in your mind are the powers?
Well, I don't know. Are they appointed? I know Papa George, you know, I mean, they've had.
Oh, the JCAR?
The JCAR or whoever is in the legislature, there was a lot of, you know, there was a lot of unexpected concern, and I think part of it was, you know, part of it is some of the participation or questioning of, you know, the lack of participation and, you know, and so how the rules were developed and implemented. I think that's why it's, things ended up the way they did, and I'm just wondering if there's anything being done legislatively to address that or to change that. Because I'm assuming there's going to be a whole other set coming up at some point.
Well, again, right, with the new session, new committees will be named. If I recall, most of the members, many of the members of the JCAR committee from last session have been term limited.
Right.
And so they will not be named, obviously, again. And according to the state law, the Office of Regulatory Reform had to draw, withdraw, I think is the right term, the rules, because they did not meet the 15-day time in front of the legislature. And so we are looking at options as to whether they have to, whether they can be, whether they are resubmitted or what happens, especially with input from the executive office in that process and, you know, the authority from the department and whatever, and JCAR and those rules. So we're, we are looking at what needs to be done at this point.
Okay, so are the rules being revamped or are they not? So you're just taking the rules that are already?
At this point, the rules have been, right, the rules have been, what's the term? Withdrawn, officially withdrawn from JCAR.
Okay.
And then they can be resubmitted.
As is, as changes.
They can be.
Okay, so, all right, so is that what's going to happen?
Again, we are assessing all the possibilities.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I don't think I'm breaking, I'll just say it, my understanding, and I'm happy to be corrected if I'm, if I have this wrong, but I think the Lieutenant Governor has asked to meet with some of our folks, and he was the key person who went in and asked for them to act as they did. So I think we should understand what that is first. I mean, ultimately, if they're withdrawn and not resubmitted, we go back to the table. That's one, that's one possibility. I'm sure the staff's dreading that, but it's probably very possibly a result of that. I think one thing that, I don't attribute at all any malice, I think what ended up happening in a lot of those is the legitimate issues that people want change in are actually not, in most cases that I'm aware of, in all cases that I'm aware of, not affected by the rules. They were affected by, for example, one that even stunned me. I remember after the meeting, we were in debrief one day, and I said, federal law doesn't require a parent to sign an IEP? Because I thought maybe there had been a miss, someone misspoke. So there's that kind of quirky stuff that I think.
Yeah, it is really quirky.
But it is, to me, I'm just saying as a citizen, not in my role, it would seem that that's odd. On the other hand, that has nothing to do with a rule change with respect to that, but I could see where a lot of people got fired up because they thought that was something the department did at that point, when in fact it wasn't touched at all. But there's other pieces of, so we're, I think, we thought it would be appropriate to take the meeting with, I'm not with it, but a couple of you are with the Lieutenant Governor, if I'm understanding correct. Ben?
Yeah, there are two of us, we'll, I'll be in a meeting with the Lieutenant Governor, so I don't want you to be under the impression that we have not accepted and discovered.
Okay.
And I know, I don't know enough about this. I read it this morning. I had a meeting prior to, prior to this meeting though, so I didn't, you may be more up to speed on this, but I understand CAC is weighing in in some way, and I don't know what any of that means. We'll probably talk about it in debrief. Is that right?
Yeah.
That's an appropriate body on its own, and I guess they're going to, they have, not sure what they have. I haven't heard of documentation yet, but I'm not sure I actually saw that. I saw a letter of concern that referred that CAC wrote it, or has CAC actually submitted anything to us?
They're still finalizing.
Okay, so they're going to do something, and I know some of the legitimate interested parties are weighing in, and we'll just have to filter through that in the next couple of weeks, I guess. Yes, ma'am.
Can I get a copy of the CAC, whatever they recommend?
When we get it.
When you get it.
Yeah, they have the sentence yet, but I believe it's ready to go to my hearing board.
Yeah, we'll make sure either way.
Thank you.
Just to answer your question, Detroit News is reporting that the governor has announced Darnell Early to replace Jack Martin. It doesn't indicate a limited appointment, so I would assume it's a full eighteen months.
That he will replace Jack Martin?
Yes.
It doesn't say for how long or who it is.
It doesn't indicate that it's a limited appointment, so I would imagine for the full term of the.
No, you don't know who it is yet.
It's, yeah, it's Darnell Early.
Oh, it is?
Yep.
I'm not in on the in on this, but I do think there's, my sense is that there's an attempt to try to work with the Skilman group in some way, but that would have to be for the governor and others to confirm, but that's a sense I have that that's been promised. When would it be? Sixty days from now? I think it was ninety days originally.
So Skilman not necessarily the elected school board?
Not the school, it's the, it's that coalition.
Coalition, the variety groups.
Yeah.
Lemon, one guy on it, I think from the board, yeah.
Right, but I mean, I'm just saying, I would see that as a citizen almost, as a hope that folks from the citizenry, working together through Skilman's kind of organization, organizational options. It's got Reverend Anthony and others on it also, a school board member, that hopefully they come up with solutions that may, but again, I don't, I don't have any inside information on that. That's just the way I'm reading into this to some degree, and I.
I don't believe they're open meetings, but I could be wrong.
I don't think it's a government body.
So they don't have to have open meetings.
But they'll, at some point, I'm assuming they would have some, maybe you correct me, but some recommendations to the governor on what they think.
I think that's the intent, is to make recommendations.
And that would be healthy if that's being taken into consideration at that time.
I received a number of phone calls last evening about this, rumors that the governor was going to announce this today. They didn't know what, they're very upset because they think that the law says that the, it's one term, eighteen months and that's it. He interprets it differently, so there's going to be.
I'm sure there will be a legal challenge.
It's going to be some hullabaloo and a flurry of unhappy people.
It's funny, as you know, you wrote me last night, and I pretty quickly said it. I don't have anything to do with this anymore. Then I came in this morning and said, I don't have anything to do with this anymore, right? I was ninety percent sure, and Marty said, no, no, that was an iteration. There's been three iterations.
Yeah.
And the one you were referring to is why I came in this morning a little less comfortable that there. that there was a, like an, there was an original law, then there was a second one that said the state soup would provide names from which the governor would have to select. So I came in a little nervous that, is that still there? No, that's gone.
That's out.
That's out. And our issue at all would be, for instance, had we taken different action with Flint, then theoretically, that could start putting them into a situation, you know, of, what's the word that's used? Had we taken?
Preliminary review.
Preliminary, right. So, but that's the one I mentioned earlier. I think we did the right thing in trying to give some more time for them to sort this out. And I don't know if I said this before, and I don't think there's any reason I can't, but that was really based on Mott stepping up. And that's great that they're continuing to do this. And didn't want, we didn't want to jeopardize that support by not approving a deficit elimination plan, if it seems like this might be able to work with their continued support, and that's the hope. And then, but a lot of this is, can they get enrollments back? You know, can they, is there heavy lifts? Can you attract citizens to come back to the schools? They have a new team there. But we keep telling them, this isn't about money and the final analysis. This is about, can you get enrollments? And if you can get enrollments and you have an attractive program, you'll, this will, you'll work yourself right out of the deficit and everything will be fine. But I'm a little, I have to admit, a little tentative about, we went out to 2022?
Some people get enrollment by having money, you know, offering laptops or.
I'm sorry?
Some people get enrollment by having money, you know, by offering programs or having, I mean, I think they do go hand in glove.
Yeah, that's, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just saying, if I were in that spot, I'd be focused on, what do I have to do to get parents to want to enroll here? And admittedly, there's some advantages maybe some others have. Yes, ma'am.
I think they're trying to do that, but at the same time, they're being undercut by the creation, the authorizing of more charter schools. And they drew students to the charter schools, and then the enrollment goes down instead of up.
Again, I think some of it might be, I'm jumping around a little bit, but when you look at the study done today that had some depth to it about what kids needed in order to be motivated, you wonder, I think if I were a principal of any school, charter or traditional, I'd be trying to figure out what appeals to the parents and the kids in that community to have them want to come here.
I think they probably are doing.
And then that can take care of itself. And I think more and more, we're seeing with deficit districts, they're, they're very well tuned into that, you know, and they are. They have a lot of strategies and some of it, you almost, I think, my own experience over decades now has been, you get more credit than you deserve and you get more blame than you deserve. It's part of it. So a school that kind of had a lot of credit, I told you the story, but when I was a local soup, and I finally said, we're not really doing that well in math with young women, and everyone freaked out, even though it was true. Once you recognize that, you could do something about it and improve dramatically. But I think what happens is, there's a tension right now that, how open are you about some of your weak spots if it ends up costing you enrollment? So there's a little bit of a catch-22 in this whole thing, when actually, we should be open to our weak spots so you can improve it. So I have a lot of empathy for them. Kyle and his team do a great job, but we, did it go out to 20?
21.
2021, which is admittedly longer than we've done, but it's with, especially with the Mott support. And I don't know this for sure, but I think we were worried that if it had not been approved, would that have jeopardized any future Mott support? And that's maybe one of their key hopes to.
Did you do that with Detroit too?
Yeah, please, thank you.
No, I mean.
Find some Mott support, yes.
Detroit did it themselves. They found, or Mott stepped up and helped each other.
Yeah.
Flint. So if somebody steps up in Detroit.
Right.
How about the, how about the state government? Wouldn't that be an idea? Just an idea?
Well, that's, yeah, and that's the earlier discussion. But yeah, to clarify, if I was, if I misspoke there, Flint, as Lupe said, Flint is the one that's been keeping the confidence of Mott to their credit. We're good on that item? Thank you, Cassandra, and thank you, Marty and team.
Thank you.
There's no consent agenda today. I don't know what the heck that means, actually.
We talked about everything that needed action.
Oh, we did? Okay. And any further comments?
Yeah, there's one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
The latest issue of NASB's magazine is called The Standard. The current issue is about summer learning.
About what?
Summer.
Summer learning and the importance of programs during the summer to, so that kids don't lose what they learned over the summer months. And several months ago, John sent out an email, so he got a request for someone to talk about our after-school, our out-of-school-time standards. And he asked me if I would talk to the man that was doing the interview from NASB. And I did. And they were very interested. We're one of the few states, if not the only state, that has adopted standards for out-of-school-time programs. And they thought I was really very interested. Well, the last, the last item in this issue is the interview with me, so, of the out-of-school-time programs. So when you get this, you'll get an issue from NASB.
Can we get that?
Take a look at it.
Bring it in for an interview, I mean, for an auditing.
Oh. Yeah, I didn't know what was going to happen. You know, you never know if it's going to get printed or what they're going to do with it, but they did it.
I also got a question from someone about, if I can make sure I've got it clear. It has to do with special education. It has to do with short-term objectives in Wayne County. And to get some clarification on whether they have to provide short-term objectives or not. And because according to this person, there are a number of folks or districts that are being, are saying somehow, that are out of compliance, that are not providing short-term objectives. And why are short-term objectives important? It sounds technical. It is, it's important in order to really clearly identify the needs and the services that are required to get them through on a day-to-day basis to meet these goals, long-term goals. So without them, and I believe it's just for special education, secondary, that are on the diploma track, that, and so there's some real confusion about it. I'm being told there's a lot of, because it was one position and it got, there was misunderstandings around it, but what is being done to make sure that the whole state is in compliance? And maybe that can't be answered, and maybe I'll get a response later. But I was asked this question very recently, and I wanted to just put it on the record. Anybody?
Sure. I mean, if you could share some of those specific concerns, it'd be much easier for us to.
Okay, I can forward you.
Perhaps, or forward us whatever the complaint is.
I think Marcy Lipsitz on it.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about.
Yep, so we're familiar with that, and I've spoken with some of our liaisons about gathering some of her concerns that have spanned, you know, about a year or so, and really sitting down with her to really unpack what the core issues are.
Good.
So that's where we are in terms of the Marcy.
And we'll copy the board.
But if we could have your specific, you know, whatever.
Okay, if I have anything.
If you could share that with us via email, that would be helpful. But our goal is to sit down with her specifically at some point in the near future and really talk through some of her concerns, because she's, she's raised several in the last year.
Right, right.
So that's what we.
I think that would be a great idea. I thank you, I thank you for doing that.
And any written stuff we'll share with all the Board, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Great meeting. Thank you all. Thank you, we're adjourned.